Thank you, and good morning. I understand that state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was publicized in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting and can also be found on P H L council dot com. I now note that the hour has come. Clerk will please call the roll to take attendance. Members that are in attendance will please indicate that you're present when your name is called. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, I am present, thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, I'm present.
Morning.
Councilman Dom.
Good morning, council president and colleagues and the snowy listening audience.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Morning, council president, good morning colleagues, good morning to the public, present.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues, and good morning Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilman Green.
Morning, council president, good morning colleagues, praying for safe, peaceful city of Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilwoman Jim.
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues, still seeking justice for Darius Wright, 15 year old, lost his life in gun violence and grace fairing.
Morning.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilman O.
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues.
Morning.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Councilwoman Parker.
Present, good morning.
Morning.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Councilman Squilla. Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, council president, good morning colleagues.
Morning.
Council President Clark.
And good morning to everyone, we have established a quorum in.
Council president, may I be recognized, I apologize, this is Councilman Bobby Heenan, want to say morning to you, good morning to my colleagues, and please everybody be safe out there, this weather, and also please check on our neighbors, especially our senior citizens.
Great, good morning, councilman. Okay, we're, council, we're gonna get started now. So despite the great need, there will be no invocation today, we will, however, observe a very brief moment of silent prayer for our city, its leaders and citizens during the current public health crisis. May we please have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 11, 2021, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 11, 2021 be approved?
In second.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 11, 2021 stand approved, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, ayes have it, and that journal is approved. And our next order of business is a request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Share thanks to Councilwoman, and our next order of business is communication. And Mr. Decker, will you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that you may have in your possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 538 Dudley Street, 639 Cantrell Street, 2842 through 44, and 2846 Tulip Street located in the first council-matic district, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1746 Cannon Street, 2231, 2232, 2235, 2249, 2252, 2324 Cross Street, 2227 Fernand Street, 2224, 2256, 2305, 2309 Greenwood Street, 2230 Reed Street, 2318 Tasker Street, 2214, 2220, 2222, 2239, 2241, 2243, and 2315 Wilder Street located in the second council-matic district, and an ordinance demanding Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees Retirement Code by creating an early retirement program for certain employees working in or with the Department of Commerce Aviation Division, and an ordinance demanding Chapter 19500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Taxes and Rents General by adding required conditions and information for reporting adjustments to taxable income, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for the next season of council, session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I want to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, can you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members?
Before you do that, council president, I just wanted to record as, as present, I had lost connection right when, when you were asking me to acknowledge.
Thank you, thank you, council, we knew you were in standby somewhere. Thanks, councilman.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance demanding Chapter 9208 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Cafes and Title 4 Subcode A of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Use Registration Permits by adding new provisions allowing restaurants applying for a sidewalk cafe permit or temporary lot uses permit to allow outdoor entertainment.
Verdict committee.
And on behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title of certain properties located in the fifth council-matic district.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers one bill and one resolution entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Preparation Commissioner to enter into a contract for the construction of a sewer and a pertinent work required to provide public water service in the unit block of Osborne Street.
Verdict committee.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia native Stefan Fulton on becoming the junior featherweight world boxing champion.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers one bill and five resolutions entitled an ordinance demanding Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees Retirement Code by creating an early retirement program for certain employees working in or with the Department of Commerce Aviation Division.
Verdict committee.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1746 Cannon Street, 2231, 2232, 2235, 2249, 2252, 2324 Cross Street, 2227 Fernand Street, 2224, 2256, 2305, 2309 Greenwood Street, 2230 Reed Street, 2318 Tasker Street, 2214, 2220, 2222, 2239, 2241, 2243, and 2315 Wilder Street located in the second council-matic district.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold joint hearings with the Committee on People with Disabilities and Special Needs to examine the city's role in ensuring the accessibility of housing to persons with disabilities.
Today's calendar.
And a resolution calling on Congress to pass the Commission to Study and Develop Reparation Proposals for African American, African Americans Act.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring Michael Mash on the occasion of his passing for a lifetime of dedicated service to the people of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution calling on the National Football League to discontinue the practice of race norming in their concussion compensation program.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers two bills entitled an ordinance demanding Chapter 9800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant to address matters related to the landlord and tenant relationship during the novel coronavirus of 2019 pandemic, including providing for alternative methods for tenants to meet their obligation to make security deposits.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance demanding Chapter 19500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Taxes and Rents General by adding required conditions and information for reporting adjustments to taxable income.
Verdict committee.
Councilman Dom offers two resolutions entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Dr. Carl June on his receipt of the shared Dan David Prize for his work at the University of Pennsylvania where he was a lead researcher in the development of the first personalized cellular therapy for cancer.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution calling on Mayor James F. Kenny to establish and implement a COVID-19 Operation Philly special mass vaccination campaign using the Philadelphia Eagles Lincoln Financial Field, the Black Doctors COVID-19 Consortium, religious institutions, Philadelphia Health Partners, colleges and universities, and other large outdoor facility locations as identified to provide vaccines to Philadelphia residents and workers.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President Clark, I'd like to move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the consideration of this resolution today on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
If the move is probably second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, that will be on today's final passage calendar.
Thank you. Councilman Thomas offers a resolution honoring and congratulating the 2020, 2021 Philadelphia Youth Poet Laureate Cindy Brown for her creativity, community work, and dedication to serving Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers three resolutions entitled a resolution recognizing the week of February 14, 2021 to February 20, 2021 as the first Black Girl Freedom Week to celebrate and honor black girls and the unique challenges they face, as well as to invest in their safe, free, and successful futures.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Deborah Archer for her new position as the first black president of the United American Civil Liberties Union.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings examining current and best practices to ensure youth have a successful transition from foster care to thriving adulthood.
And that will be on today's calendar.
Councilman O offers one resolution entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia artist, musician, and anti-violence activist Michael OG Law Taban for his 15 years of work and advocacy on behalf of returning citizens, victims of crime, and disadvantaged youth in Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, that concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is the reports from committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for report from the Committee of License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Committee on License and Inspections reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Licenses and Inspections to which is referred Bill Number 200618, entitled an ordinance demanding Chapter 94200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Donation Bins to modify the locations at which donation bins shall be permitted. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, the chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Number 200618.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 200618, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today, the chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for report from the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, please read a report.
The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to which is referred Bill Number 200617 entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing an Initial 10-Year Conversion of the Current Term with Up to Two Five-Year Renewal Terms for a Lease Agreement the City Has Entered Into with the First T of Greater Philadelphia for Operating, Managing, and Maintaining the John F. Byrne Golf Course. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, the chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 200617.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 200617, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rule have been deemed to have had a first reading, now these bills will be on place on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. If there are additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolution of the bill on the second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today, they are numbers 210123, 210124, 210125, 210127, 210129, 210130, 210131, 210132, 210133, 200715, 200716, 210031, 210032, 210033, 200604, 210004, 210006, and 200656. All of the resolutions and bills are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Jim, did you, did you want to be recognized?
Yes, I'm so sorry, Council President, I just wanted to be recorded as voting no on the request earlier to suspend the rules on one of the resolutions that was introduced. I don't know the number of it, and I apologize, I, I tried to have my sound on and it wasn't working.
Okay, so you wanted to vote no on the resolution of.
On the suspension of the rules.
For the resolution, was it the, I think we only asked for the stadium, was it a resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Really special, I think it's called, yeah, okay. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Jim is voting nay on the suspension of the rule request, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, we now, we're gonna now have our, our public comment session. But before we proceed with the consideration of the public comment, it'll take like two minutes, we just have to give our technology professionals some time to connect the speakers we have for today's meeting. Thank you. We'll proceed with our public comment session now. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering the resolutions and bills we have for us today, we will consider public comment, it will go as follows. Public comment must concern matters of the second reading and final passes calendar for the possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify, you must call 2156663406 by 3:00 PM the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support or you are against the legislation, and add your name to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting under ideal circumstances, which is today, we will have three minutes to speak. In order to be fair, all of those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit, so once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony at time when will be started, you will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. I also, for the record, reserve the right to limit those number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made on the same matter, and to limit the scope of testimony to only certain items on the agenda during the emergency, which could affect callbacks and public comment at the meeting. So please be aware, again, for the record, that this public meeting is being recorded, and because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy, so by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask that the chief clerk, please read the name of our first speaker.
Andrea Lamontes.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you all?
Good, state your name for the, proceed with your testimony, please.
Thank you, my name's Andrea Lamoyne. So good morning, everyone, again, I'm Andrea Lamoyne, my pronouns are she/her, and I'm a member of the Concerned Black Workers at the Free Library of Philadelphia. I'm here today to support Resolution 210133, recognizing this month as Love Your Library Month. Libraries provide social services and access to information for community members all over our city. It is time that our public libraries are acknowledged for the wealth of services that we provide while working with little to no resources. Loving our libraries means more than admiring the work being done by the frontline workers. It means that you invest financially in the institution, it means that you provide funds to purchase materials to meet the literacy and educational needs of our community members, that the city provide proper safety precautions to make sure that community members are safe, that the city ensure that our black and brown community members all over the city are represented and respected by leadership at our library, not just wealthy white people living in certain sections of our city. I hope that Loving Your Library Month means fighting for equitable resources for community members. I hope that Loving Your Library Month means that black and brown community members are invested in and not just given the usual political lip service. I want to thank Councilmember Bass for supporting concerned black workers and for thinking of black and brown community members who visit our libraries. You have been our champion, and we very much appreciate you. The concerned black workers are still fighting against white supremacy at the Free Library as we do not have a representative sitting on the seat to hire, sorry, sitting on the committee to hire a new director for our library. We appreciate your encouragement, Councilwoman Bass, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much for your testimony, we appreciate it. Mr. Decker, any additional speakers?
There are no other speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, that concludes today's public comment period. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. So I ask Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210123.
A resolution honoring Dr. Ella Stanford and the Black Doctors COVID-19 Consortium for their contribution to health and equity during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved in second that the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210124.
A resolution commending Dr. Brenda A. Allen for being named one of the 10 most dominant historically black college leaders for 2021, and congratulating, congratulating Lincoln University for earning the historic gift of $20 million from philanthropist Mackenzie Scott.
Thank you, chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably second that the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title 210125.
A resolution recognizing February 2021 as Environmental Justice Month in the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title 210127.
A resolution honoring and recognizing Russell Collins for his dedication to Philadelphia through his extensive work in security and risk management, and for his efforts to improve the safety and security of Philadelphia bars, restaurants, and nightclubs through advocacy and training.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title 210129.
A resolution celebrating the life and honoring the memory of John Chaney as we recognize his groundbreaking accomplishments in the sport of basketball and his many contributions to our beloved city.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President, many of my colleagues and many Philadelphians are very familiar with the work of Coach Chaney at Temple University, as well as his work at Chaney State University or Chaney University, and winning a national championship at Chaney. Some people may not be as familiar in the fact that he was a, you know, also was at Simon Grant's and Sayer Junior High School as well. Brother Chaney is affectionately known because he's a member of Cap Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, where he plays at the Gamma Theta Chapter of the Thun Cookman in 1953, but also he was a resident of Mount Airy. I used to see him frequent one of our favorite seafood restaurants, which are no longer here, Grobens on Germanton Avenue, often on a Friday afternoon leaving from City Hall. I would go there to pick up some seafood, and I would often run to Brother Chaney at Grobens, and also coming, seeing him come to vote, especially when we had our voting place at the Mannerie Playground. So Brother Chaney was not only a molder of men at the collegiate level, at the high school level, but also was an outstanding man and outstanding part of our community. So with that, Council President, I'd like to move for the adoption of the resolution, and if we could take a moment of silence after the passage of the resolution.
Thank you, please have a moment of silence. Thank you, that resolution has been moved and seconded and adopted, thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the title 210130.
A resolution supporting the city's plan to prioritize vaccinations for returning teachers, administrators, and school employees at large, and urging city to follow through on the plan in a responsible and efficient manner in order to regain public trust.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President, I'd like to thank the co-sponsors, Councilmember Sanchez, Green, Heenan, Dom, Gilmore Richardson, Park, Squilla, and Bass, and I'd move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 210131.
A resolution calling on President Joseph R. Biden Jr. and the 117th United States Congress to immediately implement President Biden's plan to end the gun violence epidemic in cities and begin to appropriate the $900 million in funds President Biden pledged to cities with the highest rates of homicides. and begin to appropriate the $900 million in funds President Biden pledged to cities with the highest rates of homicides.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gottiass.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. If the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210-132.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the Academy of Palumbo's Robotics Team, the RoboGrifters, on their success at the 2021 Coder Z League Pro Competition, where the robotics team was declared the world champions.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations to those young people and the adults involved, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. If the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 210-133.
A resolution recognizing February 2021 as Love Your Library Month to honor libraries and the resources they provide communities, to show appreciation for library users, and to encourage Philadelphians to engage with their local libraries.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the city council will be voting on a resolution I introduced that recognizes February as Love Your Library Month. Nearly a quarter of our Philadelphians are living in poverty. About sixty percent of our Philadelphians are people of color. One in seven of our residents are immigrants, and one in eight of our students of the Philadelphia School District are English learner, language learners. Libraries are particularly play, they particularly play a special role in the lives of African Americans, communities of color, and other immigrant and English learning communities. Libraries provide key resources necessary for Philadelphians to have access to, especially during the COVID-19 global pandemic. Libraries serve as places to learn new job skills, explore new digital technologies people may not have access to, and provide services directly to the community. Libraries have also proven to be an important in finding health information, debunking health misinformation, and closing the digital divide. Almost seventy percent of library jobs are in industries impacted by COVID-19. The Free Library reports that one in three of its visitors are seeking jobs. Throughout the pandemic, the Free Library of Philadelphia has been assisting its patrons to safely and virtually continue their learning and connections with the communities while also assisting job seekers in navigating the job market and obtaining the digital literacy skills necessary to apply and interview for jobs virtually. Libraries foster friendships and community growth, and they engage residents in ways that City Hall and parks do not. I hope that we will all take some time to engage with our libraries in person or virtually. And I encourage our library system to continue to find creative ways to reach Philadelphians that we may not be reaching at this time. And with all that being said, Mr. President, I call for the adoptions, for the resolutions adoption. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. If the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 200-715.
A resolution appointing James Irish Jr. to the position of Chief Assessment Officer of the Office of Property Assessment.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, sir, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. If the resolution be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200-716.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Diana P. Cortez Esquire as the city solicitor.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, on your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. If the resolution be adopted, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210-031.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Cecilia Thompson to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210-032.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Lisa Sally to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210-033.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Reginald L. Streeter Esquire, the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really want to thank these very highly qualified candidates for their willingness to serve at the school board, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
Aye.
Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 200-604.
Bill Number 200-604 entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designation of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Byberry Road, Woodhaven Road, the Pecassin Creek, and adjacent lands south of Frankel Mill Circle.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move that Bill Number 200-604 be withdrawn.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. That Bill Number 200-604 be withdrawn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Bill Number 200-604 has been withdrawn. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210-004.
An ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the refunding of certain bonds previously issued to finance and/or refinance alternative funding mechanisms for a portion of the uncollected actuarial accrued liability of the City of Philadelphia Retirement System implemented pursuant to the Municipal Pension Plan Funding Standard and Recovery Act, approving the issuance by the Philadelphia Authority from industrial development of bonds and other evidences of indebtedness in one or more series to refund such bonds, authorizing and approving the city's obligation to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement.
Thank you. This bill having been read on two different days to question now shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the rule.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gem.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
No.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and ayes are one. Majority of all members haven't voted in the affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210-006.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled City Funds Deposits, Investments, Disbursements by amending Section 19201 entitled City Depositories by authorizing the city treasurer to deposit funds in Santander Bank National Association.
This bill having been read on two different days to question now shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the rule.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gem.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members haven't voted in the affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 200-656.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire a simple title or a lesser interest in real estate by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise in parcels of land along the Schuylkill River and the Wissahican Creek for public recreational purposes.
This bill having been read on two different days to question now shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the rule.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gottié.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gem.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of all members haven't voted in the affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold joint hearings with the Committee on People with Disabilities and Special Needs to examine the city's role in ensuring the accessibility of housing to persons with disabilities, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling on Mayor James F. Kenny to establish and implement a COVID-19 Operation Philly Special mass vaccination campaign using the Philadelphia Eagles Lincoln Financial Field COVID-19 consortium, business institutions, Philadelphia health centers, colleges, and universities, and other facility locations identified to provide for residents and workers, introduced by Councilman Heenan. I'm Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes.
Thank you, Council President. Before I begin my remarks in support of this resolution, I wanted to thank former Congressman Bob for his coordination efforts and leadership in helping the Philly Coalition. You know, seven days ago, I agreed to withdraw my resolution holding on the mayor to direct the Health Department to put Operation Philly Special on track. Part of this resolution is one simple message to the mayor. City council, this body, must have input into decisions of where, how, and when our constituents are to be vaccinated. A vote for this resolution is a vote for every council member having a vote. And vaccination sites will be registered in each council, districts, and around the city. Another Philly special strategy is a vision to open up drive-through and walk-up mass vaccination sites around the city in churches and parking lots and the Man's Center for Performing Arts and the largest side of the mall, Lincoln Financial Field. Yet, the mayor said he didn't want to use Lincoln Financial Field because it was, quote, "at one end of the city." Unfortunately, the mayor chose to double down on his statement from last week that and the Philly special, quote, "trying to ensure that white, privileged suburban residents of other towns and states are prioritized for vaccination." Young residents come in every day to work in our office buildings, eat in our restaurants, enjoy our institutions, and yes, pay our taxes. These privileged suburban residents, as our mayor now calls them, half our city wage tax, almost half our city wage tax, and make the city one of the greatest economic entities in the region and indeed the country. And now, in the time of pandemic, we have to stop them driving across city line. And we have to protect ourselves from them crossing our vaccines. What world is America in? Every community in America, regardless of creed, color, or sexual orientation, is confronting this moment, an opportunity. I'm sorry, is confronting a scarcity of vaccines, and our mayor chooses to use this moment as an opportunity to pit one community against another. That's just not leadership. The Philadelphia Inquirer editorial board earlier this week called the mayor's argument against using Lincoln Financial Field confusing as a simple identification requirement is really all that we would need to solve this issue. It's more than confusing, it's irrational, and in the long run, dangerous. Colleagues, a few days ago, the Philly Special Coalition released information regarding how other big cities and FEMA are working to solve the problem of big city mass vaccinations in both the quickest and most equitable manner. Here's what we found. They're all now deploying or have completed plans to deploy their stadiums as mass vaccination drive-through and walk-up sites. All of these cities are suffering the same shortage of vaccines as we are. Yet, none of them, not one, not one, has decided to use this shortage as an excuse for failing to plan for the future. Mass drive-through sites and walk-up vaccination sites are happening at their stadiums. Of the biggest cities in America, those of a million population or more, New York, L.A., Chicago, Houston, Philadelphia, Phoenix, San Antonio, San Diego, and Dallas, only one has no plans currently in place to use its stadium, and that is Philadelphia. Chicago stands ready. Dallas is now building out two stadium sites at AT&amp;T and the Old Cotton Bowl with federal money and support from FEMA. But I want to take a minute to single out what took place at State Farm Stadium recently. First, this is a stadium set outside of the city of Phoenix, Arizona. It sits in Glendale, Arizona, a white suburban area outside the city limits. President Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris chose to announce their plan to vaccinate America at this stadium. Despite the racial makeup of the city of Phoenix and the location of the stadium, they chose this site because they know something that should be important to all of us in Philadelphia. They know that stadiums are the fastest way to distribute vaccines in large metropolitan areas, but also that these sites, if supported by their resources, offer the most equitable option for vaccine distribution. Just listen to what the head of the White House COVID Task Force had to say, standing next to President Biden and Vice President Harris at that press conference, and I quote, "We're putting equity front and center, partnering with states to increase vaccinations in the hardest-hit and hard-to-reach communities," end of quote. And why would they say that? The answer to this question explains why this resolution and your vote is important today. Stadia like State Farm outside of Phoenix, FedEx Field in the suburbs of Washington, D.C., and M&amp;T Stadium in Baltimore are being used right now to rectify the very inequities our mayor believes they symbolize. Here's why. Our mayor believes that the only way to achieve vaccine equity is to put small vaccination sites in underserved neighborhoods. That is why they're ramping up sites in charter school, gyms, adult centers, and independent pharmacies. Here's what the White House COVID Task Force and every other big city mayor in America knows. The most efficient way to deal with racial inequity in vaccine distribution right now is to control distribution at mass vaccination sites and bring communities of color to them in partnership with trusted entities. That's why the president can speak of equity at a stadium in a white suburb serving a very large Latino population because they all understand that no big city in America will ever have the capacity or the resources to vaccinate fifty to a hundred thousand people a week using normal neighborhood-based channels alone. And they certainly won't hit immunity levels fast enough if we focus solely on building new channels in underserved neighborhoods. Don't get me wrong, they all understand that it would be better if we could vaccinate folks in the health deserts where they live. Do you think black mayors around the country don't want to? Do you think black mayors around the country don't want to vaccinate communities of color in their neighborhoods? Of course they do. They all have mobile vaccine units and community center programs in their plans as well. But that doesn't stop these mayors and their council members from using stadiums as a means to achieving both speed and racial equity in vaccine distribution. You don't hear Baltimore Mayor Brandon Scott, or Washington DC Mayor Muriel Bowser, or Chicago Mayor Lori Lightfoot refusing to deploy their stadiums to achieve the fastest vaccination rates possible and as fair and equitable system as possible. You don't hear these mayors railing against white privilege as a reason for not putting in play with their city's large assets they have in the fight against COVID. None of them deploy only community-based approaches to attack the problem of vaccine equity. They all see that stadiums distributing a controlled supply chain of vaccines are a critical component to achieving speed and equity. Instead of excuses, they are building up their transportation systems right now to carry their residents living in health deserts to where the vaccines are, using transportation systems as tools in the fight to achieve vaccine equity. Where in any mayoral briefing on COVID has SEPTA been mentioned? That is why the District of Columbia, right now, can build equity in its distribution system through the use of zip code algorithms because they control the vaccines at their mass vaccination sites rather than give up the control of their vaccines to smaller health systems and pharmacies in the neighborhoods. While Washington DC is using control of its vaccine supply to enforce racial equity goals, our administration is pleading with people in Phase Two from jumping the line and taking Phase One doses from those who need them most. When you control the vaccine supply and distribution, as we suggest at the link, you can enforce equity in distribution. When you don't, you're forced to hope and pray that people do the right thing. In the Philly Fighting COVID and PHMC debacles, we saw what happens when you depend on hopes and prayers. President Clark and my colleagues, we can't continue to watch from the sideline as every big city in America moves to achieve racial equity through the use of stadiums alongside community-based approaches. We cannot watch FEMA resources be put to use at a smaller location that has its own logistical challenges to overcome. Not when we're staring at a vacant stadium, location fit for use and in fact being promoted across the United States as a model for mass vaccine distribution, all because our mayor believes it's a symbol of white privilege. We must act today and call on Mayor Kenny to adopt Operation Philly Special as a critical component of our fight against this deadly disease and have a plan ready to implement when the vaccine arrives. And that means, number one, establish the link as Philadelphia's FEMA mega site and begin working with the Eagles and FEMA to bring this site online as fast as possible. Link alone can vaccinate more than twice the number of people vaccinated through every current site in the city on the best vaccination week we've seen. While bringing the link online, work with the Man Center, our partnering black churches and parking lots in every neighborhood of the city to do the same. Second, commit the vaccine resources to these sites to fulfill scheduled appointments. Third, work with SEPTA to establish a comprehensive system and schedule for trolleys, buses, and subways targeting underserved communities to bring them to our Philly special sites. Fourth, build one uniform web platform and telephone hotline, not five months from now, but five weeks from now, that allows people to register and schedule an appointment at a Philly special vaccination site, scheduling to be based upon CDC prioritization and zip code algorithms, ensuring equity. Mayor Kenny, if you have a better strategy than Operation Philly Special for vaccinating Philadelphians in a faster and more equitable way, then we need to see it. To date, what we've seen is the use of pre-pandemic vaccine distribution channels to which you've added sporadic vaccination programs at the Leacour Center, the Convention Center, an adult community center, a charter school gym, and a building on the campus of the university. If that's what we've got after one year of planning, then it's time to let Councilmember Bass and Council representatives on the Philly Special Coalition sit down with Commissioner Farley, NOEM, to pull together a new plan, one that is big enough and bold enough to meet the health crisis of our generation. Mr. President, members of city council, it wasn't the Xs and the Os of that Philly special play that led us to the Super Bowl fifty-two and the Lombardi Trophy. It was imagination. Imagination, teamwork, and leadership to fight and win against all odds. We are in a battle for so much more today. This is our lives at stake. We can beat this pandemic if we work together. I ask for your support in this resolution, and I beg Mayor Kenny, beg Mayor Kenny, to start a positive dialogue with this body. There are seventeen willing leaders on this team's meeting. We all, all of us, want to help. Let us show the nation that we, as a city, have not forgotten what it takes to make Philly special. Thank you, Mr. President, and I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Before we call for a second for the adoption of the resolution, Council President Darrell Clark has virtually left the rostrum, is now at his seat on the floor, and I am presiding, and the chair recognizes Councilmember Clark for comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Madam Chair. So let me start by saying that my primary focus as a council president is to support the members. That's what I've always done, and that's what I will always continue to do, above and beyond sometimes being criticized. I don't care, right? I'm going to always do that. So last week, since the councilman, good councilman brought it up, I asked the councilman to hold off on the resolution so we can start the process of us working together. Talked to some members about, you know, make sure that their perspectives on all of this were captured in that conversation. Started a conversation with the administration, forwarded a document that reflected some of the issues that were brought up. And trust me, I have had many, many disputes with this administration, more than anybody ever knows, right? On a number of issues that we didn't see eye to eye, and that's the nature of the business. But when, last week, what I did say is that one thing we can't do, because this is about the people of the city of Philadelphia, not about me, Councilman Dom, Jim Kenny, or anything. And the personalization of this issue, I just don't think is productive. That's just my perspective as a person that's not presiding as the council president. So I'm allowed to say what I can't say up there. Tomorrow, in the hearing on the procurement legislation, there will be a number of issues I anticipate that will be addressed that was raised as a result of concerns of council members, and I won't get into any of that today. And I say that to say that we need to make sure that things are codified. We need to make sure that when we do mass vaccination sites, I don't, I hope that nobody believes that we shouldn't be doing that at some point, because we do need to accelerate the pace, although we've had some hiccups in Washington in terms of being able to give us a timeline that reflects our ability to do that in an expeditions manner. But we have to work together. I'm going to say it again. You know, we have to work together because this is too important for us to get into this back and forth. I don't like some of the things that comes out of the administration spokesperson's mouth or whomever, right? Because I'm a member of council, right? Right? And I make that very clear, right? But I don't like us going down this path, this back and forth, because we have to figure this out, and we have to figure this out together. I have been told that there is a willingness to work together. We will see. Because I've been told a lot of things in the past, and it didn't materialize, right? I'm not that naive to think that just because somebody says something, that it will actually happen. But moving ahead, starting tomorrow, we need to be able to talk through this. There are issues with respects to mass vaccination sites, smaller sites, mid-level site. And the one thing that we need to do as the representatives of the city to make sure that the access to those sites is maximized, based on our knowledge and council members, we have, with all due respect, the mayors. Council members have the basic knowledge of neighborhoods like mayors just don't, right? That's just the simple reality. So I'm saying all that to say that I want us to stay focused. We need to stay focused on the end of that tunnel, which is ultimately getting herd immunity. The only way we're going to achieve that is for us to pull this together, have everybody have the appropriate input, have proper representation on whatever committees and other types of advisory groups that are currently in place, have the appropriate checks and balances in terms of transparency, all those things that you all have indicated that need to happen, and I'm just going to be optimistic and suggest that they will in fact happen. So I just wanted to say that. I was not prepared to give a speech, but my good colleague and friends mentioned my name on a couple of occasions, so I felt the need to have to say something. So I just wanted to put that out there for the members. This has to work, and I can't emphasize this enough. This, you gotta, can't get into this personalization of this issue that is so counterproductive. We're going to have a whole lot of time to do that when the budget season comes up, trust me, and other initiatives. But just like the issue that we talked about before, with the gun violence in the city, we talked about working together. We're going to have to do that on this one. So, Councilwoman, Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to step down virtually from the podium for a moment, and I'll step back up and I'll stop talking.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, do you want us to have the second now?
I actually think that Councilwoman Gimm, with my understanding, wanted to make a comment.
Yes, Council President, thank you very much. I just had a very brief comment and very much appreciate your remarks. First of all, I want to acknowledge the passion, the, you know, investment, the undoubted frustration that all of us on council share and are reflected by the remarks made by the council sponsor, the resolution sponsor. You know, again, I think that, as mentioned, one of the things that we're trying to figure out is how to move forward and to have some clarity about the issue. I think if the resolution, you know, part of my concern about the resolution is both procedural, I'd like to give it a little bit of time. An introduction and a vote on the same day doesn't allow all of us. Maybe some of us have been updated on the conversations with the mayor's team, but, you know, it would be good for more of us to be part of that. So I'm not personally, haven't had a chance to kind of sit down and figure out where this is going, actually. And I do think that that's an important aspect of it. So I'm not comfortable voting for a resolution on the same day that it's introduced, especially when it has to do with some serious issues around public confidence and trust. And then the last thing I'll say is that, you know, I know, one, I appreciate the council sponsor noting the other sites that are extremely important, but the resolution does primarily focus in on the stadium. And while I understand that we do need multiple different types of sites, once vaccines come into play, you know, Dodger
Point of order. Point of order, Mr. President. Is this resolution before us without a second?
There's no second yet.
Okay.
I don't believe it's before us if it hasn't had a second.
Okay.
So there are no comments to the resolution until there's
So, Mr. President, second. The motion was made. I have now seconded. Councilwoman Gimm's comments are allowed, right?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, you know, I just wanted to clarify that Dodger Stadium, for example, has had to close in part because stadiums, while being important places or could form important places, mass vaccinations can only be working if we have mass vaccines. And so we want to just make a match, and I think, you know, part of the appeal is to just think this through. I'm your partner on all of this. I want to underscore that. Nothing about this, my position on this, has anything to do with a lack of support, partnership, you know, and unity around our city needing to do better. Our people needing to be vaccinated and for equity to be the number one issue around the public health. But public health, as we heard and I'll comment later on last night, around schools and the return to schools relies as much on a sense of direction and unity and engagement as it does on what may seem right on paper for all of us. So I just want to say that, you know, I want to just acknowledge all my council colleagues who are deeply invested, deeply passionate about this issue. We share that if we don't necessarily share the outcome on it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair, Gimm recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I appreciate your leadership. I really do. I just want everyone to be aware that I want to do this in a positive way. I want to do this the right way, and I'm looking forward to that happening. So whatever you could do to help us make that happen, I really would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm supposed to do. Clearly understand my function and my role, and fortunately, being able to be a part of this body and working with these awesome members has given me an opportunity to work with this group and move things forward. I think that everybody has the ultimate goal in mind. The question is the participation and everybody being able to have an input, everybody being in a position to move the needle forward, and no pun intended, as it relates to getting this done. I'm just optimistic, as usual, as I say, I'm a glass half-full kind of guy. And I think it's just too important to not be successful. But again, I just, you know, we need to keep it focused on the citizens, you know? All the back and forth, we can do that at another time. Keep it focused on getting these people vaccinated in these neighborhoods, and in whatever way makes sense, then that's what needs to happen. You know, I know as a district councilperson, and I know I'm breaking the rules, I'm not supposed to be talking up here, but I am responding to the council. I know in my district, a site that could accommodate an outdoor mass vaccination site, I'm sure a lot of other council members, both district and at large, that should and will be a part of the conversation. So we got to stay focused, and we can't get into this back and forth. There are people who rather see us have a food fight on the floor of council to see us achieve our main goal, which is taking care of our citizens. So thank you. So it's been a call for a vote. It's been a second. You proceed. Those in favor, motion on the resolution of, what's it, Philly Special? All those in favor, I say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. It's have it, and resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gauthier, you okay over there? I saw something flash in front of me. Okay, all right. I couldn't tell what it was. All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Decker.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings examining current and best practices to ensure youth have a successful transition from foster care to thriving adulthood.
I'm sorry, who was that representative?
Introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm calling for the suspension. I'm sorry. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved to probably second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Aye, aye, aye. It's have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, prior to, that concludes our calendar for today. Prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record, at this time, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft's team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this purpose. With that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? And Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I want to talk today about minimum force training. As we have talked here in council, there's a homicide rate, there's violence on our streets, people want to be safe, and they want police. We have, in Councilwoman Um, we have, uh, in Councilwoman, um, Sanchez's district, a new mini police station integrated with other services. At the same time, there is a need to ensure that we are investing in our police officers in a way that assures the public that they are safe in every manner. Um, there is maximum force training and it has to be balanced with minimum force training. Um, I like to, uh, just refer to a book that has been, um, very insightful for me. Uh, I read it when I was in the military. It's, uh, the title of the book is On Combat. The psycho, the psychology and physiology of deadly, deadly conflict in war and peace. And what that deals with is what happens to the mind and body when engaged in deadly conflict. Uh, there's a story about a police officer who trained, uh, in case a gun was pulled on him and he would have his son surprise him, uh, in the house, wherever. And he would snatch the gun from his son and give it back to his son. And then one day in a mall, when he was off duty, a robber came out, pulled a gun on him. He snatched it away and gave it back to the robber. Um, that's muscle memory. That's reaction under stress. Um, minimum force training is simply training in a more consistent manner. Uh, law enforcement to have options under stress, to not use force when it's not necessary, to use the least amount of force needed when it is required, under stress. And I just have to emphasize, just like people sound great in the shower or they play tremendous sports when nobody is guarding them. When stress comes, it's a whole nother thing. And when your life is in danger, there's a whole nother thing going on. I want to recognize Bucks County District Attorney Matt Weintraub for being the first in our region to examine instituting minimum force training to train law enforcement on how to have the confidence and knowledge to perceive things in a manner under stress where they may decide they do not need to use any force. Or if force is necessary, how to use force that will do the least amount of harm, the least amount of unintentional harm, uh, possible when it is required. It does take courage. It does take. Thinking and I appreciate that's what he's doing on Monday, February. From, uh, frozen here.
You froze.
Okay, I, I, I see that.
You're good.
So, so I want to, uh, say that on Monday, February 22nd, there'll be a demonstration discussion in Langhorne. Um, because that's, that's in Bucks County. I, I would hope that here in Philadelphia, we would undertake this type of training to invest in our officers to make sure that's something they can do. Um, I will also say that there is, um, a group that, that will be represented and that is our African-American martial arts community. Um, and that is a separate community that arose during the civil rights movement. That's why they are their own unique group. Um, and I'm glad that they're attending and looking at this. The inclusion of the community is critical to ensuring that this is success. So I appreciate, um, what the, uh, DA Matt Weintraub's doing. And, and I certainly have been an advocate of that here in Philadelphia. And I hope we will undertake the same. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. She, uh, on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, I just wanted to note for the record, I had to connect with my phone because my wifi was a little choppy, sir. So that's why I had to discontinue my camera. Um, yesterday, uh, Mr. President, around 3:00 PM in broad daylight, there was a mass shooting, um, at Broad and Alley, which is, uh, represented here in the city by both, uh, Council, uh, Member Bass and myself. Eight people were shot near the Alley Transportation Center. The victims were two females, ages 36 and 17, as well as five men, ages 21, 22, 48, 53, 70, and 71. They were shot in their backs, ankles, legs, and arms. The oldest victim, a 71-year-old man, is currently in critical condition with gunshot wounds to his back and both legs. Two people were taken into custody and, uh, I do want to thank for the record, both the Philadelphia Police Department, uh, and the Septa Police for working together in order to, uh, make that happen. Um, you know, while, Mr. President, um, I am being very intentional, you know, about attempting to control, um, my pitch right now. Um, but, but I, like all members of this body and the, the conversation that we had before, um, we, we all went live today. Um, are very, uh, angry and, and frustrated, um, about seeing this continue to happen, uh, in our city. Um, in the midst of this, Mr. President, I know it sounds pretty perverse, but, you know, thank God we were and are in the midst of this pandemic at this time and schools are currently closed because those of us, again, like we talked about early on, you know, again, not because we read white papers, but because those of us who are even members of this body, we know we traveled through that corridor to get to school, to get home, uh, you know, to get to work. Um, if schools had been open, Mr. President, things could have been so much worse. Um, I, I want people to know that, um, the eight people that were shot, the youngest one was, was 17. And, and as I said, the oldest one is in critical condition. Uh, I know Councilwoman Bass, my office, and many others, um, have been working for years to improve the area around the Broad and Alley Commercial Quarter. Um, we also know that there's an open air drug market there. Uh, and we also know that there are many people who don't live in that community. But that is, uh, the, the, the location that they have chosen to buy and sell drugs at that transportation center. We also know that there are people in this area who need mental health services, drug rehabilitation services, and permanent housing. Um, and while we know that we can't arrest our way, um, out of this problem, let's be really clear that my telephone was ringing and I'm sure Councilwoman Bass's, uh, was at the same time with people saying we deserve to be safe in our neighborhood. And right now, we don't feel safe even coming near that commercial quarter. Um, unfortunately, this area, um, again, uh, it's been a drug and an economic crime hub, um, you know, in recent years. Um, and while we know people need help, we do need public safety and we don't just want to focus on criminal records, but let's be clear. Our people need the support of the police department in that area during their first job, which is to protect and serve, um, our community. Um, I also want to state for the record that we know that there are folks who need wraparound services. The mental health services, the substance abuse resources, education and workforce training. Um, in essence, Mr. President, we need a resource hub located directly at Broad and Alley. You know, a one-stop shop where people can get help and get access to assistance that they need. Um, and for the record, for the benefit of the people who are listening and particularly those who live in that community, I want you to know that before this mass shooting, uh, occurred yesterday, uh, my office just met with DBIZ. Um, and they are planning on deploying their street team to the area, working with the Office of Homeless Services at the same time. We know we need those street teams. We need people working with the folks who live and work in that community to find solutions that work for that neighborhood. Um, we all know we're in a public health crisis, um, with this pandemic. And as Councilmember Jones and Johnson, yourself, Mr. President, Councilwoman Gaultier have noted, this gun violence is a public health crisis, uh, as well. Um, so far, 270 people have been shot so far here in 2021. And that's an average, Mr. President, of 5.5 people a day. That's a 66% increase in gun violence over a last year's pace with a 48% increase in homicides. And it's no surprise that these shootings are happening in predominantly black and brown, uh, communities. Just like these same sad communities have been the most negatively impacted by COVID-19, they've also been the most negatively impacted by the, this level of gun violence. I know we need a proven evidence base on the ground, you know, set of programs to be implemented in our heart neighborhoods. Uh, we need to measure these programs effectiveness. Um, I know there's been an increase in gun violence a, a, around the country. Councilman Jones, uh, talked about that earlier in our conversation. Um, and we need to be paying attention to what other cities are doing, uh, right now that may be better than us. And so, Councilwoman Gaultier, I'm looking forward to your role and leadership on that National League of Cities Task Force and, uh, Committee to Reimagine, uh, uh, Public Safety. Um, I know we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can learn from other cities and, um, you know, other countries' best practices and implement the most effective solutions now. Um, there is no silver bullet to solving the scourge of gun violence. Um, but I know that what we are currently doing, um, is not enough. Um, in addition to that, Mr. President, I've got to open up a text message here, um, and state this. Um, we have a commercial quarter and neighborhood plan that has been developed for the Broad and Alley Quarter. And, Mr. President, I want to note that this plan was put into action not from the top down, but it came from the bottom up with partners like Einstein, the Logan Civic Association, the A Concern Civic Association, the North Fifth Street Community Development Corporation that will soon become the Alley Community Collaborative. Um, in addition to that, we just secured a new commercial quarter manager through our Commerce Department that is actually starting next week, um, in the, uh, PACDC Corridor Training Program. Uh, in addition to that, um, we funded initiatives from Ruscombe to Godfrey on Broad and installed over 10 security cameras, uh, in that area. We've employed our PHLTCB, uh, in that program to give people, you know, access to resources, um, so that they can clean up the corridor. But, Mr. President, all of that has not been enough. We have work to do in the short term, focusing on people. In the medium term, we have to focus on the corridor, our neighborhood, our assets, and the anchor institutions. But we must, uh, walk and chew gum at the same time. Um, you talked about, Mr. President, um, council working together, uh, to address this, uh, issue. But I know in this area here at Broad and Alley, Councilmember Cindy Bass, uh, Councilman, uh, State Senator Art Haywood, who's been extremely helpful in funding, uh, many of the programs that I just, um, announced to, uh, you all, that we have already ensured that they were active in that area and all of the elected officials. Um, we will work collaboratively to do what we can do, uh, to improve the quality of life at that Broad and Alley Commercial Quarter. Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. Um, last night, I just want to thank, uh, the Committees on Children and Youth and Education for a marathon public session on the school, uh, on the potential reopening of school. As we know, yesterday, the School District of Philadelphia announced, uh, that it would be delaying the reopening of school, um, basically for another week until around March 1st. But last night, we had a chance to hear, uh, significantly from the public. Many of us have gotten the emails. We've certainly gotten phone calls talking about, uh, concerns that have been raised. Um, but I wanted to go through a little bit about why it mattered. Last night, there were more than 50 testifiers. We had over 300 respondents to a survey. Um, there was three hours of questions from council members to, uh, CHOP Policy Lab's Dr. David Rubin, who's been advising school districts all around the country, um, as well as here in Philadelphia. And, uh, and more than two hours of it was devoted to Superintendent Height. And additionally, there was, um, almost five hours, six hours, five, six hours total of public testimony. Um, this could not have happened without, uh, you know, the significant partnership of many of the individuals who worked towards this and especially, uh, with the partnership of the Education Committee and the Children and Youth Committee. And our goal was very clear. We wanted to have a place where our constituents could feel heard, respected, and responded to. And what we understood from last night is that our public schools, um, are just more than about, you know, opening, closing doors, having schedules, putting timetables on the map. They're rooted in public trust. They're rooted in engagement and the intrinsic relationship between our schools, our children and families, our homes and our neighbors. It was fundamentally about what we heard last night more than anything else, the importance of communication and trust and the need to really build for a full reopening of schools. No matter what would have happened either on, uh, February 22nd or March 1st, more than 90% of Philadelphia students will still remain, um, at home in remote learning. And less than 7% of students would be in a hybrid environment, um, going two days a week. So we really need to focus in on the broader school reopening, what it takes to build back the confidence and trust of, uh, more than 130,000 families at 200, uh, school, public school buildings all across the city with more than 12,000 staff members, um, which include, uh, building, uh, maintenance workers, our cafeteria workers, paraprofessionals, and many others that make up the life of a school community. First and foremost, I just really want to express gratitude for all the parents, educators, school staff, principals, and community members, some of whom had waited hours to testify. There was incredibly passionate testimony, uh, from individuals, from comments, uh, from principals who are deeply confused about, um, basic protocols that the district, um, were, was promoting. Um, I'm, you know, deeply moved by a building engineer, Raymond Jackson, who had just a set of recommendations that he thought were really basic from the importance of having functioning boilers in schools, which many schools do not have, um, to just clearing out overcrowded, uh, you know, classrooms that are filled with junk, basically, uh, to make his work easier. There were so many teachers who testified. I'm thinking about Kiara Coleman, a single mother, uh, who's, who, who's a food service worker, um, who contracted COVID, uh, but continued, uh, afterwards and beforehand to, uh, keep working because she must. Um, and making sure that she really loved her job and taking care of young people. I'm also thinking about parents like September Fisher and many others who've reached their wits' end. Uh, there's no question that virtual learning has been frustrating for many of us, uh, on council who are, who are parents as well with, uh, children learning in the household. Um, we understand that. And, uh, other folks like Anna Perring and Mara McInerney reminding us that there's so much to do with special attention to children with special needs, immigrant youth, and, um, virtual learning at home. Um, you know, what we heard was the immense amount of stress and burden that everyone has been under. Students and families, teachers, school staff, administrators, and how incredibly grateful, again, that we are to everybody, uh, for their service, uh, because they have been educating and taking care of our young people during these last 360-some days or 340-some days. Um, and I think on behalf of our council, we wanted to convey to them once again how grateful we are for their service through a very, very difficult time. But I also think it's really important to understand that one of the central through lines that we heard across individuals, not just from one group of people, was that there's a profound lack of trust with the school district. We heard, uh, from individuals who wanted to both be heard, but also more importantly, wanted to be responded to about legitimate and longstanding concerns that have been raised by communities across the city and especially by black and brown communities and immigrant communities, which have been hit hard by the COVID pandemic, by the economic, uh, bottoming out of our city, as well as a legacy of racism and of educational disparities that have been long neglected by the district, our city, and our state. Um, you know, we, we need to understand that our goal has to be about finding these public forums and to push the district to answer the questions of their constituents. Our ultimate goal, um, has to be about bringing our young people, our school staff, and our communities back to schools that are safer, that are healthier, and that are better equipped to support our young people more than they, they ever were before. No public health. No public health uh protection is delivered through a website, a mandate, or a press conference. It's actually co-created on the ground. It's got to be lived with the people who have to enact them and who also suffer the consequences. And I'm just very grateful uh for my co-commissions um for being partners in that and trying to see a path forward um as we work through this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I was up last evening just reflecting about, you know, the work that I do. And it's no different than um in past years as we address the surge of gun violence that has an impact not only on us as elected officials, but me as an African-American young man who grew up in this city and who are raising two African-American young men who are also living inside um this city. And I know during this upcoming um budget session, there was a report early on this week that there's a four hundred and fifty million dollar um budget deficit. But there will be hearings asking for input as it relates to what do the public thinks our priorities should be when it comes to this upcoming budget process. And I just want to state for the record that there is no other pressing issue right now that we're facing uh beyond the pandemic than gun violence. We're on the path of saying more than six hundred and fifty murders if we go on the same trajectory that we're doing right now. And so I wanted to put that out there as it relates to the work that we are doing. I look forward to all of us wrapping our heads around how do we address this issue comprehensively uh from a policing standpoint and how our Philadelphia Police Department are engaging and building the bridges of trust with our residents, um, looking at on a deeper level of how are we providing social services to our most vulnerable populations? So young men won't pick up guns in the first place. And most importantly, the management structure as relates to how are we coordinating and collaborating and strategizing and making sure that of all of our city agencies are working and rolling in the same direction when it comes to addressing um this issue of of since this gun violence. And this is a social justice issue because at the end of the day, there's Black and Brown children dying on a day-to-day basis. And we still don't see the level of outrage across the city of Philadelphia when it comes to addressing this issue with a sense of urgency. But nevertheless, uh, that's the role that we are taking on as council members. But also importantly, the community, the community is demanding that this issue be addressed aggressively. Um, and I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues and making sure that we find ways to not hit a target of five hundred to six hundred murders during this and, 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 and the end of um this year. And so I just felt the need to just state that for the record, that's how I have been feeling. Um, not only just because of the shootings yesterday. I mean, I had a sixteen-year-old shot um in my district, um in Southwest last night outside Seven-Eleven, but I also had a fifteen-year-old murdered last week in Graves Ferry. And so um it only makes my resolve stronger. We have to aggressively get to the bottom of making sure that my young people aren't picking up guns. Most importantly, people feel safe. And right now, it doesn't feel safe um as residents here in the city of Philadelphia. When we go in and out of our houses, people do not know um that uh depending on where we're going, we are council people, we're civilians as well, we're feminists who we are raising. And so those are my statements, Council President, uh for the record, as it relates to the state of gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia. On another note, happy note, I want to acknowledge um our Majority Leader um and her new position as the first African-American woman serving as Chair of the Delaware River Port Authority. And so I want to acknowledge her. Um, that's a great position to hold as, as we look at um the economic development progress of moving the city of Philadelphia in this region. And so I just want to state that for the record and congratulate um our Majority Leader. Thank you very much, Council President. Thank you for your leadership um as well.
Thank you, Councilman. I, I made a call to congratulate the Councilwoman. The first thing I asked her to do is please do not raise the bridge toll as high as New York. It is fifteen dollars to go across the bridge in New York. It's crazy. Yeah, thank, thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. And I think um Councilman Johnson uh gave a great preview for uh what I also want to comment on as well, too. I mean, this gun violence problem, I think, is um, like he said, one of the biggest problems, if not the biggest problem we have um here in the city of Philadelphia. I um was at Broad and Olney with several of my colleagues uh a little while back when we seen some civil unrest and we were out there cleaning up and kind of reminiscing about different stories. Um, being somebody who's born and raised in the Northwest, we call it Uptown. I've spent years of my life um traveling through and at Broad and Olney and a lot of my contemporaries that I grew up with can say the same thing. So um, yes, ditto what everyone has said. Uh, we really have to do something about this gun violence thing. Uh, we have to address it right away. Uh, but then we also have to think about it from a systematic perspective. If we're serious about addressing the issue of gun violence, uh it starts with looking at our schools. Um, we really have to look at how our schools are governed. Councilmember Gimm talked about the hearing that took place this weekend. You know, just uh during my one year in council, I think that that's a big concern that we have and that we need to look at um as it relates to education and the accountability of who's responsible for the education of our children. And that's um starting with how our schools are governed, but it's also looking at climate, culture, and curriculum. Um, council talks all the time about the poverty issue and the housing issue and those issues, and we have to continue to address those issues i- if we're serious, again, about addressing gun violence. But there's a couple of other things. Um, in our hearing yesterday, uh, we asked a little bit about the mental health support. We know that uh we had record numbers of, of gun violence last year, but we also had significant trauma across the board. And I can give a whole dissertation about the levels of trauma that we seen last year. And we need more mental health support. Um, we need to also fund the grassroots organizations. I think we have a number of organizations, and I use uh Unity and Community and Frontline Daz as examples all the time, who've been quote-unquote grassroots for ten years. And when do they get to uh be in a position where they're actually a part of our uh, our, our budget as it relates to addressing, addressing issues of public health? And of course, we have to uh make sure that our young people's time is occupied in a positive way. So looking at how uh we have this conversation around OST, and like you said, Council President, uh, budget time is right around the corner. Um, so if we're serious about all these things systematically, I think that, that uh we have to address them uh piece by piece. And uh, of course, council's going to step up to the plate to do that, and it's going to require us to work in teams and sectors uh to be able to, to, to pull that off. Uh, outside of the gun violence emergency, I do think that um, and the coronavirus emergency, I do think that there are several other emergencies that um are not getting the attention they deserve. And one of them is the hit-and-run uh crisis that we have here in the city of Philadelphia. In the year two thousand twenty, uh, we see more uh car accidents um and accidents that led to fatalities than what we've seen in nearly over a decade. And so next week, um, as the Chair of Streets and Services, we're going to have a hearing um next Wednesday at uh ten AM. I'm going to have a hearing around the hit-and-run crisis. And we want to hear from the constituents in the city of Philadelphia so we can examine uh how do we address this issue from an infrastructure perspective? And what could we do um considering the fact that we spent months uh at home in two thousand twenty, but still had a record-breaking number of fatalities as it relates to the car accidents? And last but not least, as I close out, um, I too want to congratulate my colleague, Councilmember Parker, who is my uh district councilperson um uh for her appointment, as well as Councilmember Gaultier uh for her recent appointment as well, too. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kylia Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to just acknowledge some of the work that's being done around all of this and, and just really want to highlight that that is why it's important, you know, and I appreciate you, Council President, getting um to the floor and saying this. You know, we have to acknowledge the challenges we have, but we also have to assure the residents um that we are working towards this in a way that reassures them um that we're going to work through this stuff, right? And so what we say matters and what we do matters. And so I appreciate, you know, the passion by which Councilman Dom wants to work at this vaccination plan because it's not an either-or, it's an and, and an and, and an and. There's many, many, many things that we have to do. And gun violence and the trauma, people are outraged, outraged about what's going on with that. And, and I appreciate Councilmember Parker and Bass um acknowledging those challenges, but then saying, look, we're working towards this stuff, right? We're going to do A, we're going to do B, we're going to do C, and, and if ABC doesn't work, we're going to do DE and F. Like, we're, we're aggressively tackling this. Uh, and, and I appreciate the sensitivity as we talk about school reopenings, right? Um, there is a lot of distrust. And that's why it's important that we acknowledge that distrust, but we don't fuel it, right? That we say to folks, we're going to hold people accountable because that's what you elect us to do. I don't want folks to be scared about the, 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 the challenges in front of us. I want them to voice their concerns and be respected, but I want to be for them that we're working in that direction. And we don't always agree with the administration. Um, and we don't always agree with their messaging and, and, and how they, how they deal with this. But we talk through it, we debate it, and then we move forward. And there's no other line item more important than when we talk about budget and financing and when we talk about how we're going to help people recover. And that's for me, you know, and Council President, I appreciate as Chair of Appropriations the flexibility you've given me to work with you around this budget. You know, it really concerns me when the administration puts out a message that we're going to have a five hundred million dollar deficit and then we're going to cut people. If we're saying that we're not going back to the old normal and that the new normal's going to be better, putting fear in people around what we're going to do around our most vulnerable citizens during this time around gun violence and others is not reassuring. It's just not reassuring. We don't know what the feds are going to give us. And but what we do know, and what this council has demonstrated, at least in the thirteen years I've been here, is that we are going to get something done. Um, and in this time and in this space, it's going to be more equitable. And that's why for me, and I'm going to use your, your word, Council President, it is stunning. It is stunning that the Water Commissioner would go and ask the Water Rate Board that you established, Council President, for almost seventeen percent rate hike in the middle of this pandemic and this COVID. It is stunning. And I'll put this in writing, it's just stunning. You know, I have worked so hard with the support of this council on the water affordability program. There's thirty thousand people registered. We have seventy thousand new people um who are in delinquency in the water uh as it relates to their water, those of us who think water is the right, and that the Water Commissioner will say, in the middle of a pandemic, we're, we're asking people to shelter at home and their home more often. And part of uh not contracting COVID is washing hands and being clean, that we would send this message that we're going to give them a sixteen, seventeen percent hike. Stunning. Tone deaf, stunning, tone deaf. I have no words. There's seventy thousand new people who have a water debt. And I know, Council President, you are a great believer around benefits and rolling people. We need to reach those seventy thousand and reassure them that government won't be the reason why they can't be in their house and that they don't have access to water. So I say this to say that the next few months in this budget and as we align the budget to the new normal, that tone that we want to set, you know, we're going to, we're going to not compromise on protecting the most vulnerable constituencies. And we're going to demonstrate to folks that we have the leadership and the political will to do that. Um, and that we're going to make sure that this recovery um is a different type of recovery that is more equitable. But messaging what we say and what we do is important. Um, and I think we can talk about our challenges uh and at the same time reassure folks um that we are working on, on their behalf. So thank you, Council President. I appreciate you coming down today and saying that um and reiterating to folks that we, we've been in this space before and we've gotten through this space before. But we only do it when, you know, we're very clear around what the goal is, uh, what the mission is, and, and that is the people of the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, you know, I just want to follow up uh regarding Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez, uh, Count Sanchez uh around the height, uh, the requested hike in water rates. And um I, I just cannot agree more. Tone deaf is completely uh the way to describe what has been proposed in the middle of a pandemic when people have lost their jobs, people are losing homes, people are losing everything. And we've been, been trying to provide a safety net in city council for these very same people and at the same time to uh take an action which could literally pull that safety net, yank it out from under people that we've been working hard to try to uh help, help and be of assistance to. I just think it's really short-sighted. So uh we'll certainly be paying attention and working and doing what we can do um to make sure that, that, you know, that that is uh addressed. Um, I wanted to just say a couple of things. I wanted to talk briefly about Broad and Olney. Um, and I wanted to thank uh my colleague, Councilwoman Parker. Um, and, and congratulations to her. I did call her, reached out to her yesterday to offer congratulations. Someone also offered congratulations to Jamie Gaultier, uh, Councilwoman Gaultier. I'm not sure, um, I, I didn't get the word on what that appointment was, but congratulations anyway, Councilwoman Gaultier. Um, but back to Broad and Olney. You know, this was a train wreck that we all saw happening. This was a train wreck that was slow-moving, but certainly on course to happen. And that's because Broad and Olney has been a problem for many, many moons. Um, through countless calls uh to SEPTA for help uh at this very busy transit hub, the second busiest in the city, second only to uh the closed pen, Fifteenth and Market. And so this is an area that has needed and deserved attention for a long time. And it certainly um cannot be said that at least myself, and I know uh Councilwoman Parker and others have reached out, um, but that at least we have reached out and contacted the general manager. And when I say general manager, I should actually add an S to the end of that because I've spoken with general managers since, you know, ever since I've been here in council. I spoke to uh General Manager Pat Casey. I spoke to General Manager Jeff Knirpohl. And I spoke to General Manager Leslie Richards, all about Broad and Olney and the help that was needed to address some of the problems to stop this very slow-moving but nonetheless on-course train wreck that we all saw coming. Uh, Broad and Olney needs to be safe, it needs to be clean, and it needs to happen today. If I go to Broad and Olney right now, after, at the end of this uh meeting, I know right now I can still go there and I can get whatever drug I'm looking for. I can get probably anything that I'm looking for at Broad and Olney. And so uh I want to thank my colleagues for all of their work uh on this as we put our heads together and we continue to come up with solutions. We need SEPTA to be on board with that to help make it happen. Um, but as we unveil them, we can't forget why people continue to come to Broad and Olney. And that's because it's a transit hub. It's the second busiest in the city, as I mentioned earlier. And people are going to continue to be there, and those people deserve better. They deserve better. SEPTA deserves to offer more, or SEPTA should offer more to its ridership and citizens and taxpayers and riders. Uh, like I said again, they, they just deserve so much better than what is being offered to them at Broad and Olney right now. Um, the other thing I just wanted to speak on just really briefly, um, if I may, is I wanted to talk just a little bit on a more positive note about Black Girl Freedom Week. And so I saw something this week uh about that, and I just thought, this is very interesting. We should talk about this, we should promote it, we should put it out there because this is incredibly important as we talk about our communities and our young people who are uh in danger. And we cannot forget about African-American girls. And so today I introduced a resolution recognizing the inaugural Black Girl Freedom Week. Black Girl Freedom Week is a series of empowering events from February fourteenth to February twentieth, twenty twenty-one, hosted by the Black Girl Freedom Fund. The Black Girl Freedom Fund was first founded to call for an investment of one billion dollars and Black girls and their futures. This week, the organization aims to celebrate, celebrate Black girls, Black cis and trans girls, Black gender expressive youth, and Black films and the opportunity made possible to them for which they would be invested in. Black Girl Freedom Week has planned an event each day this week to recognize, honor, and educate us on both the challenges and power of Black girls. This past Sunday, Black Girl Freedom Week recognized and demanded visibility and justice for Indigenous people who were tar- who were the target of murder, abduction, and trafficking. On Monday and Tuesday, conversations were hosted about the activism and leadership of Black women and girls. Yesterday, the event discussed how to create safe communities for Black girls and the importance of investing in the future of Black girls with disabilities. Today, an event on understanding the importance of Black girl, girlhood narratives and honoring the birthdays of Toni Morrison and Andre Lord will take place. Tomorrow, the event will explore healing and a national policy agenda for Black girls. Tomorrow, the event will explore healing and a national policy agenda for Black girls. The week will conclude on Saturday, February 20th, with a celebration and conversation about what a $1 billion investment would mean for Black girls. I wanna thank the Black Girl Freedom Fund for efficiently dedicating this week to Black girls. Black Girl Freedom Week celebrates and honors the unique challenges of Black girls and their bright futures, but every day, we should be supporting our Black girls regardless of where they're from, what neighborhood, what their background is, and investing in their ability to create change. And I just wanted to say really briefly that I just received a text a few moments ago from State Representative Chris Rapp, and I did not know this, but his, a friend of his is actually the founder and conceptualized the idea of Black Girl Freedom Week, and her name is Dr. Monique Morris, and she was thrilled that Philadelphia City Council is honoring and recognizing the work that she's doing to highlight what is abundantly possible when you invest and you believe in the dreams of Black girls and their power and their leadership. And so, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for their support for the resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes this Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Council President, and, you know, there are two really pandemics and violence are our number one issues right now, no question about it, but we do have to take time to celebrate the good things that are happening, because, boy, we do need fun and good things these last 11 months. And so, one of those, I wanna join my colleagues, Councilmember Jamie Gauthier, congratulations. I believe he joined the National League of Cities on the task force. That's great, it's an honor, and I think I speak on behalf of all of us, we're so proud that a member of this council gets to serve with that. I know that Councilmember Green is also very active. And of course, our Majority Leader Sherrell Parker, wow, that's amazing. I think not only are the first Black woman, but could be the first member of council serving on the Delaware River Port Authority as the chair. And you know what, I heard the announcement, the first person I thought of was Langston, and I said, wow, your son has to be so proud of you. And these are the times where you really wanna embrace them and take them into your heart, and congratulations to your Majority Leader Parker, really very special. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I wanna thank all of our colleagues for saluting both our Majority Leader and Councilman Gauthier for their new leadership positions. Also, I wanna thank Councilwoman Bass for introducing that resolution, bringing some positivity to this council session. And when you think about the issues that have been discussed today from violence at One Island that many colleagues have spoken about, the challenges in reopening our schools, and Councilmember Johnson also spoke about our budget process. I've been in this body, this is my second term. I've worked for Councilmember Tasta for a number of years, and she served as Majority Leader and Finance Committee Chair, and I think in my experience, this may be the most challenging budget process that we've ever had in this body. When you think about the fact that last year we had a $750 million deficit that we had to solve, and now we're talking about a $450 million deficit, we're hopeful that we'll get support from the federal government, but that's not guaranteed. And I make this statement, I've made this statement in the past, that we all are leaders who members of this body, and all of us that work in City Hall, Mayor Kenny, the 17 members of council, we have different ideas and concepts on how we should move forward, but we all are the city of Philadelphia, and we're gonna have to work together collectively. And although I may suggest and support ideas like the link as a mass vaccination site, I'm also gonna be supportive of the mayor and Dr. Farley and all their efforts to have as many vaccination sites throughout the city of Philadelphia. Just like many of us challenged Dr. Height in reference to the school reopening, we also, all of us, support the work that the school district is trying to do to educate children in the city of Philadelphia. So, I make this statement, I've made this statement in the past, and I'm gonna continue to make this statement that although we're gonna have differences of opinion and perspectives on how to do things, we have to work together. We have some major issues ahead of us, some major challenges, especially from a budget prospect, and we're gonna have to make some very difficult and challenging decisions as a body. The mayor with introducing the budget and us as members of council evaluating that and passing a budget, but just because we make hard decisions and ask questions, we still have to work together. So, my hope is as we continue to move through and try to address the issues of gun violence, our school reopening, trying to have vaccinations for everyone in the city of Philadelphia, and resolve this budget process, just because we ask a hard question or ask hard questions from a passionate perspective, that does not mean we need to make this a tit for tat going forward, because we are all the city of Philadelphia. When we step out of City Hall, we step out of our offices, when they see one of us, they see us as the city. And so, we need to continue to ask our questions, challenge each other, have disagreements, but still work collectively together. And I'll leave with one last example. Our colleague, Councilmember Maria Quinones Sanchez, just opened up a satellite office in her district, and she had been very critical of the administration on a number of issues, but that just demonstrates that we can be critical of each other, but also work together because we all represent the citizens in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. So true, so true. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanted to thank my colleagues, Councilmembers Gim and Sanchez, for the joint hearing around school reopening yesterday, from Tanya Edwards, a school district employee and grandmother from Winfield Heights, to Mr. Acosta, who frequently visited all of us in City Hall in all of his advocacy efforts. We heard from many families, teachers, and others about the importance of building trust in the process. I want to thank Councilmember Parker for her remarks regarding the mass shooting at Broad Island yesterday, a subway stop I used for four years as a student at the Philadelphia High School for Girls. I also wanted to highlight, Mr. President, that yesterday, Mayor Muriel Bowser of Washington, DC, launched a first-of-its-kind Gun Violence Prevention Emergency Operations Center as a part of a new comprehensive gun violence prevention program, Building Blocks DC. The Emergency Operations Center deploys a public health approach to gun violence prevention. The approach recognizes gun violence as a public health crisis that requires a whole government approach focused on people and places in the community. Building Blocks DC will engage people most at risk of becoming a victim or perpetrator of gun violence and focus initial efforts on working with individuals who have been repeatedly arrested for gun-related offenses, are under active supervision, have been directly impacted by gun violence, and have experienced the ripple effects of gun violence. The program, which is a place-based, data-driven approach that uses block-by-block analysis to pinpoint specific areas where gun violence is regularly happening, will work to create individualized wraparound plans for support, including housing, career and workplace readiness, mental health care, academic support, and other government services. The initial investment for the program is $15 million with additional funding support upcoming in their new fiscal year budget. So, as my colleague, Councilmember Derek Green stated, we have to work together on all of these issues. So, I'm calling on Mayor Kenny to also establish a fully funded Gun Violence Prevention Operations Center here in the city of Philadelphia. We cannot continue to do the same thing and expect different results, and we must continue to work together on behalf of the people we serve. And I also want to congratulate my fellow freshman four colleague, Councilmember Jamie Gauthier, on her appointment to the National League of Cities Reimagining Public Safety Task Force with other council members and mayors across the country to develop strategies to reimagine public safety. And finally, Mr. President, I rise to congratulate our Majority Leader, Councilmember Sherrell L. Parker, on her recent election as Chair of the Delaware River Port Authority, the first woman to ascend to this position in the history of the organization. Sheryl Sandberg, COO of Facebook, said it best, "Leadership is about making others better as a result of your presence." Mr. President, I know we are all better because of our colleagues' presence. Kudos and congratulations to our Madam Majority Leader, Councilmember Sherrell L. Parker. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Council President. I just really wanted to thank my colleagues for all of the congratulations and the recognition. It means a lot. And I also wanted to add my congratulations to Majority Leader Parker, becoming the first Black woman to chair the DRPA. That's so inspiring to all of us and so powerful, so congratulations. And also, just, you know, sitting here and listening to the speeches today, I was really proud to be a part of this body, and I think hearing, you know, all of the council members speak about the issues of the day and the issues happening in their communities, it should be apparent to everyone listening at home that this council is listening to their constituents and digging in on the issues that matter. So, thank you so much for all of it, for all of the work that everyone is doing.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman, and again, congratulations. It appears to be all the speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority, and so with that, the Chair will be recognizing Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Sorry, Mr. President, to disappoint you, I did have a few comments, and it was in, I know that was wishful thinking, but I'm sorry. Yesterday, Mr. President, I had the opportunity to be a guest on Ikey Raw's show, it's a podcast, and he is a man of the people, and the subjects were dealing with mothers who lost children to gun violence. There is a slight disconnect between what we do and what they think we do. So, I encouraged them last night to tune in today, and I hope and pray that they did because they would get, thanks to my colleagues, a better understanding of our priority to stop this thing, gun violence. And there was a question offered in the show that what is a state of emergency? And not until Jamie Gauthier just spoke did it come crystal to my psyche. It is, in Philadelphia, when our rhetoric meets our actions and intersects with our budget. When what we talk about in a given session equals the policies that we put forth and is funded fairly by this body. I am very proud of my colleagues today, because, yes, Broad Island was a tragedy, but we did not put our heads in the sand. We talked about it, had difficult conversations, and are ready and poised during the budget to address it. Second part of being on that show, and I thank host Mr. Raw, is there was a young lady, well, first of all, a member Thomas had already been on the show, and also, a young lady, Ms. Kennedy, lost a son. I talked about him some time ago, his name was Raw, I mean, Rel. He had promised me, we built a playground in Winfield. Kathy knows exactly, I mean, remember, Gilmore knows exactly where it is, and he promised me, when we built that playground for those kids, that those kids, under his watch, would be safe. He kept that promise. I walked up on him one morning, as I do, on 54th Street walking my dog, and we had a real rap conversation where he said, "All I want, old head, is a job that pays so I can change my life." Thirty days later, he was dead. Is one of the things that I feel responsible and let him down, the first thing was I didn't get him that job in time. Second thing was when he died, they announced it on TV, I knew where it happened, but I didn't know his real government name. I knew his street name, so I didn't know that was him. His mother, Regina, let me know who it was in a hurt, angry way, and we were gonna do a block party for him. That didn't happen. Didn't happen, and I had to apologize last night, because since that, over 580 other murders happened. It is difficult to keep up, but what I promised them was that we were gonna make up in a couple of ways. One, we're gonna make sure her son be remembered by one of the scholarships to a program, the Handyman Program, which we are on the precipice of doing. But more important, we're gonna show the love through making it a priority in our budget so that future kids don't have to walk that path and can find a way into being taxpayers, being regular, everyday heroes that go to work and raise their families. And so, today, I hope they tuned in, and I told them about you, Mr. President, always getting sued by the NRA. I told them about Quinata Johnson and I often fearing to watch the news because of the locations these murders happened and trying to figure out, is this one of those days where I have to hear our mothers cry? But I brag about not just the folk who are immediately impacted by it, but some of the other members, like you, Member Dom, who care deeply about it too. It's not necessarily your neighborhood, but you've made it your issue as well. So, it's not just those who are in districts that have high instances of violence, but this entire body I vouch for cares about the well-being of our children and youth. So, I'm very thankful to be a member of this body, and I hope and pray that the folk that watched, Ikey Raw, watched us today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, and motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 25th, 2021, at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
Thank you, we moved in second, that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 25th, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 If it was opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Look forward to our reach out to have a further conversation about this gun violence issue. Thank you all. Be safe out there, it's kinda ugly out. Be careful.